Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, December thirteenth, two P M. We're at the City of Ocean Shorts planning commission meeting, which I call the order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Ricker here, Commissioner Lockman, Commissioner Ward here for now, Commissioner Gordon,
Yeah.
Commissioner Roth Bar.
Yeah.
Commissioner Schultz here. Before we get to the agenda item, which is included approving the agenda, approving the minutes. I was gonna ask the mayor to say some words about one of our distinguished members. Well, anything else you want to talk about?
Well, first of all, thank you. I stopped by. Number one, I want to appreciate the kind commission of the work that you guys do. I mean, it makes my life easier because you do the investigative work of what we need to do. So I appreciate you committing to do everything you need to do. Also, I want to stop by is that we're losing one of our valuable paying commission members and you've been here.
Eight years.
But you've seen a lot.
Yes.
You know, in eight years and you you fought a lot of battles. And I really appreciate the commitment you've made and I think you've made Ocean Shore a better place and it's always. I always like having boards where people kind of question whatever the decision is because it makes us make better decisions and I really appreciate it. You'll be missed. I mean, this this board, but you're, I'm sure you're the type of person will be too much busy doing other things with it. So I appreciate the job that you're doing and you leave a legacy. And along with that, we have two brand new members, first me, right? And I look great and wonderful things that you guys are doing. So I just wanted to stop by and say thank you and also if there's anything that I can do for you guys, allow me to. Okay?
Alrighty. Before we go to the meeting agenda, the first agenda item, I know it was a special last time we're building our coverage, that's more information. We've already voted on not making the plot industrial, but we want to take, we want to take one more look for informational purposes at the impact on multifamily lots. There will be no agenda voting item on the first. On the first meeting on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
She knows. Alrighty. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah, I, I, yeah. So move with two corrections.
Okay.
The minutes were taken, I think, by Thorn.
Yeah.
And I don't think Marshall was here.
He was not. Okay?
Those are two correct.
You have a period. Here's your credit. William, yeah. Do I have a second for an end of rendering?
Second.
Or second.
Give yourself credit for that one. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. So move. So, public comments. I know Richard doesn't have any, anybody here? Vida, any comments?
Hi Gary. No, I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, um, first agenda item, building our coverage. I know we've been beating this one and beating this one. But the very last thing for background, we haven't been here. Uh, there was a recent change in municipal code saying buildings cannot cover more than forty percent of any lot. What the commission discovered through Marshall and other folks, then abruptly, we did not say that was only residential lots. So there's been some commercial development that has been marginally attacking, but could be more impact. Last meeting, we voted to recommend a change to the, to the Osho municipal code saying that this forty percent rule only applies to residential lots, not commercial. The last thing with, with the first agenda item, Thorn, in his research, pulled up the typical multifamily lots. So on the agenda packets, you can see page six, seven, and eight. Three different lots. The first one on page six is a triplex zone. Seven thousand seven hundred square feet, forty percent would be thirty eighty, so that would allow a thousand square foot per unit. In our, my opinion, adequate for triplex. So that's a fairly large triplex. Second one is very similar. That's another one. That's a eight thousand four hundred square foot lot. Forty percent rule would be thirty three sixty and one thousand one hundred and twenty. The last one is a small triplex, which is only eight thousand eight hundred square feet. But in looking, seven hundred four, um, seven hundred four square feet is not an unreasonable footprint. Looking at some of the other ones around town for a five flex. So that's, you know, a decent size. Five, and you're not seeing a lot of five flexes getting built. So this was sort of just informational about when we say residential only, it won't be unnecessarily adverse impact to multifamily lots. Do we have to, is there any more discussion about the change we voted on or this quick look that's on that day?
Just one thing. I think the difference was more significant than than on Facebook, and that is because the language before qualified that restriction as the dwelling size. And this restriction qualifies it as the sum total of the square foot of all structures on property, all buildings on property.
And that was done with full intent.
Yeah, and so garages, things like that are included in this mix here too. So none actually going to put a garage in a five flex lot, but that's, and I don't have an opinion either way because I don't know. What, what, what did it?
And looking around, driving around town, I haven't seen any triplexes or five flexes with a garage. So it's not common in that sort of building.
Really any of their structures.
A lot of structures. No, all those lots currently, and those were built twenty, thirty years ago. All built without any, it's just the triplex, the duplex, the five.
Actually duplex with the laundry.
Yeah, once in a while, but not all. Ellen.
I think, as I recall, um, Dan, you, you were there. When we looked at it and said dwelling rather than just structure, it, it was based on, on the map on single family homes. And if you look at, um, I, I went back on my notes. If you look at an eight thousand square foot lot, which is small, forty percent of the open uh, land that you must maintain, thirty two hundred square feet or thirty percent of that is taken up with setbacks.
Right.
And so you would still have forty eight hundred square feet. And if you put an eighteen square foot house on it and a three hundred and sixty uh, square foot garage, that totals up to twenty one sixty. You'd still have twenty six hundred square feet to put out buildings, barrages. So that I believe was the focus, wasn't it, not then?
That's alright. That was single family, but we wanted to look at potential impacts of multifamilies because what we voted on for proposed code language was basically gonna say residential only. So that would be all residential, single and multi. And I, we can discuss making it single family residential only, but I think we started to, my opinion, we started to cut it a little too fine as to what we're trying to do.
Well, I don't want to change it to single family only. Obviously, there's more than enough room to put anything you want on even the smallest lot.
And I was here, it was very long, it was special about structure didn't work because it included flatwork, driveways. I was here for that discussion. So we went to the building definition because that includes all outbuildings, garages and all that little stuff. It was very deliberate. And what's gonna happen is, well, if we ever go to the Clean Water Act, lose our exemption, which we might do to population, then we're gonna be in a whole different world because it's all structures. But it's also mitigable. It's not hard and fast. You can mitigate a higher coverage of thirty five percent. So. And I've talked at length with Marshall about that. So this is just informational is why I wanted to put the, we want to do a quick run through multifamily. But we'd already voted on the language. So I think we were done. This was just more of an informational agenda item. Anything else we need to bring up?
Yeah, just one. We, uh, we've come a little bit too ambitious when we describe a lot as being a square feet. Typical lot here is seventy, seven thousand two hundred square feet. There are some that are about seven thousand and some that are about eight thousand, but almost probably eight percent are seven square feet. The other thing is that our rules we passed it applies to the total of all structures permitted or not. Well, I don't know how we measure the or maintain the record of an unpermitted structure when you don't need a permit to get. And I'm not sure, I think, what's a hundred twenty square feet is the minimum, maximum or something like that. So it's a concern on those, for those people that are on the edge of whatever their limit is. I don't know what that is or how they qualify that with the city when you apply for a permit. So I assume that's the problem with the building department to manage.
Yeah, there, I mean, if there is a concern and like everything else, it'll be, it'll be neighbor group. There'll be neighbors that's gonna say, my, my neighbor's trying to put up his fourth garage and I think his building was all blocked over there. Well, that's how, I think that's how things happen around here.
Kind of smaller garages.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, that's kind of what it is. So I think we're done with this board discussion. Did we ever vote on the language change? I think we did. We did that one. Or do we actually not vote? Did we not vote on the actual language? We voted on residential only. Alright. Right, so we can go back and vote on the actual language, which is on page four, right?
Page five.
Five. Right. So the actual proposed revised language is no building or combination of the building permitted or otherwise, we would add in a residential zone self shall exceed forty percent of lots specified for the section. We have a motion to propose this new language.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Are we going to create some language for triplexes, duplexes, et cetera, or are we gonna let them build one to one?
No, this is, any residential though is our one through our nine. This is including multifamily. This includes multifamily.
Well, I thought Thorn's concern was making it difficult for multi-family.
Well, we just, we just ran the example back here and triplexes and and, uh, I mean, if we take it, if we make our threes, our fives, or our sevens, the highest we have, right?
Our nine.
And our nines. Then we sort of, where do we stop? Because a duplex, our threes typically will never be a problem. Maybe an issue in our seven, our nine?
I think our problem is more with respect to how are you gonna cram five units on a single, a single story?
Yeah, right, yeah, anyway. So that's kind of a moot point. Basically, there's no single story unless we continue the, the miniature, super small dwelling size like we're doing or somebody else, but that's only a lot of the common laws.
The only reason I add is with the excess of the going in a ordinance and how we squeeze all that on the bodies.
The A D U?
Yeah.
Different issue, but yeah.
Yeah.
But again, I think most A D Us, all A D Us would be on an hour one, but there's very few hour ones unless you've built two garages already. You're gonna have a very hard time finding, not finding where an A D U on a typical residential though. Or is that sort of answer your question?
Okay, yeah.
So, any more discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, so that's unanimous.
Would you have a second for that?
Yes. I think this goes to the city council. This goes to the mayor before the city council, I will go with Senator.
Uh, before we move on, could I, could I make a comment that um, I would like the mayor, I'm so happy to hear because I would like at some point a discussion on, um, garages. Namely, there's a one just went up on Duck Lake Drive near the airport. And it's a three or four car garage. I don't see residents on the lot. And it is about double the size of any house in town. It is huge. And it dominates the whole neighborhood. And I would like at some point to see a discussion on garages when there's no residents and height restrictions. But if you don't take a drive down Duck Lake Drive, by chance, and when you pass the airport, it's on the right.
I think the one that you're talking about is, uh, is a joint to the house that's next to it. It's being built by the homeowner that's next to it.
It's humongous.
I, I'm not discounting that. Just adding information.
It's quite tall. I've got a five car garage.
It's, I mean, the, the architectural standard required that no more than, as I remember, we're trying to make some sort of better looking garage in those. Isn't that right, Dan, where you could have no more than two on the same plane? So the third bay had to either be forward or back by a setback until they were intense to make it basically not look like a hallmark is what you're really trying to do.
And it has to look the same as the house.
It has to have the same architectural appearance as the house. And you can't have just a garage on a residential lot. You must have living capability.
But if there's a house there, I'll go back and look. It should, the garage should resemble anything I see around it.
I think that was permitted before the rules changed.
It was what?
It was permitted that way before the rules changed.
We're, the architectural standards, basically, we tried to make garages look better.
Well, I, I think it's worth looking at.
I'll go by it.
You know, trying to keep some uniformity in a residential neighborhood, I think this is important.
It is, it was a reasonable that was built on, on well, I just got off a model of this. Somebody built a metal garage under the old rules.
There's big one on Lake West, too.
There's also big one on Lake West. Very large metal pullbars that gone up before we got the new rule.
I, I think that's part of the issue is the garage looks out of place because of this metal side.
Yeah, yeah.
So these are pullbar type garages that have gone up in several places. So, so five. Anything else on that? Thank you, Alan. Um. Back into the gateway corridor. Uh, we had this discussion and Paul and Turner were here for most of this long, long discussion on, uh, at the last meeting. Same sort of information on nine. The first, on page nine, the highlighted bold are what we would propose to the mayor. No longer be a permitted use in the gateway district. The gateway district being defined as from the city gates, basically just past here. Um, Ocean Shore Boulevard to the Polynesian and Get Your Boomer or whatever it is. And then the bar.
The ocean church in sweet.
Ocean Shore then sweets. And then from the roundabout down to Ocean Shore Boulevard is the gateway district. Um, what we looked at was, was currently allowed in zone B one that we think is not compatible use. Uh, we've had much discussion about one family, two family and multifamily dwellings. I did a lot of walking and vibing in your right, going there on three. Two were vacation rentals, Ocean Shore Boulevard, single families, then there's a single family next to the Days End. So those would be impacted in the future.
More than that.
Single family.
There's another, there's another single family across the street from the Days End, across the street and down, um, and down a ways, the concrete thing.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the old water as well, aren't they? It's only residential.
It's not residential?
Maybe users both, but they have a sign on that as good as the business.
Gotcha, okay.
So I didn't cut that one.
Gotcha, okay.
Good, you're cool.
I don't know. I don't know. I think it's beautiful property. I backed by it. I was telling them, wow. Quite a lot.
Concerned with this.
The other thing we thought was incompatible, we all agreed on white apartment rental and other uses of a similar nature and then incompatible being on high, onsite hazardous waste treatment and storage facility. Um, we looked, so we then went and looked through residential garages, carports, private greenhouses, and a accessory structure that wouldn't be appropriate. And then we went through the conditional uses and basically said, um, the, what we didn't think were appropriate in a gateway district are recent extractions, airport, row houses and outdoor character over the indoor. Um, we had a proposed description and we may get to a vote on this. This is where we would really start. So starting on page ten, item eight would be the description of the gateway corridor district. Starting on page five would be the permitted uses, grocery, nervous, groceries, drugstores, hardware stores, hotels, motels, restaurants, cafes, taverns, cocktail lounges, banks, restaurant, show office, specialty shops, jewelry shops, healthcare centers, residential only on an upper floor and a mixed use to do with retail and administrative primaries. This is where we start having discussions. Their remaining permitted accessory structures are simple fences, wall fences, off-street parking and drive-in windows, et cetera. Uh, we always leave the public assembly, public uses, which is libraries, police, fire stations. Um, and before we get into the restrict, the, the unpermitted activities, we had a long discussion and the mayor wasn't here that many of the, some of the hotels have converted to long-term rentals, I suppose, or just overnight visitors. And there's a larger, larger use of that. So what I did was basically, Thorn's looking at is I looked at the definition starting on page twelve. What we have is as much of a definition problem as anything else, as you said, Bill. Um, an apartment, boarding house, dwelling, dwelling's multiple, dwelling unit, and hotel is the one that gets to me. It's a building or a portion thereof where six or more guest rooms are lodged. With or without meals is provided for compensation where no provision is made for cooking. Is that true? In an individual room or suite?
There's lots of hotels with kitchens. That's what I thought, yeah.
Unless they're hotels where that isn't excluded. So I, it's just, it's maybe a definition cleanup we need to figure out.
Been back in the sixties.
I understand. Um, it's, and for comparison, you can see transient rental, which I think we've, we've been here a while. We've talked about like thirty days or less. The issue is we have, in the gateway district, we have many hotels that are doing, using long, allowing long-term rentals.
Mm-hmm.
So how do we manage that as an appropriate use in the gateway district? If we say you can't have multifamily residential, what is the difference between a hotel, motel and a multifamily residential if the hotel motel are doing long-term rentals?
What's the feasibility in a same non-existing multifamily?
Well, that's
I mean, no.
In the zone, in the zoning, that's inherent. So.
The, uh, the only, you know, my, my only issue with with this is the, is the taking the one family, two family, multifamily dwellings off of this because I feel like it's set and it's gonna set us up to fail with with some of these hotel units that might go into disuse if they can't be rented short term. And they can't be rented long term because of some, you know, some rule that we put on the blogs. And then, and then we're stuck with a blight situation.
Oh, please.
Uh, you know, I think in order to survive, the, the turning into apartments or rental units, however you want to face it. Um, and I really would not like to stop that because I think it's detrimental to the appearance of the community if we don't allow them to become residential, but instead they stay as a rundown hotel. So I kind of like to accommodate hotels turning into apartments if there's a way to do it.
And that's, that's kind of why I put these in here, all of these definitions, because I'm not sure where that situation fits.
Right, so tell me, I, I mean, maybe this is a radical thought, but what if we left in one family, two family and multi, multifamily dwellings, left it in there? The, the, uh, I feel like the, the downside of that would be that some, but some developer might come in and say, oh, well, hey, I'm gonna buy this piece of property right next to the Irish place and put a single family home there, which obviously we, we don't want to happen. But at the same time, who in their right mind would come in and do that and put a single family home next to your business?
Some would do and then complain about the noise, maybe. It's like a dead call.
Well, the whole intent was to preserve commercial property for commercial.
Yeah.
That's the whole intent when we wrote this was, was to to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think it's a good idea to leave it in. That's my first. And, and this, this came, this all was right out of a comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
This wording of residential on second story only is straight out of the complaint, which has been approved and adopted in the gateway corridor. But complaint doesn't really do define the gateway corridor very well. So we're cleaning that up is, is what we're really sort of doing is cleaning up the complaint and uh, definition of the gateway corridor. So what I don't know is, and I'm hoping the group can sort of come to a realization is, when a, when the sands does long-term rental, does it transition from being a hotel to an apartment?
They're quoted as.
I don't think so.
It's sort of, sort of in an inverted manner when you.
Don't, don't they have to adhere to the same rules that motels and hotels adhere to?
Yes, they have to. A long-term rental is, my opinion, is a contract to stay in a hotel or motel for an extended period of time. Um, an apartment, and that's why I looked at this, is a room or suite or two or more rooms occupied or suitable for occupancy as a dwelling unit for one family. Dwelling unit is one of our rooms, like one family's delivery containing multiple housekeeping facilities for one family.
So can we make an exit, an exception in this for existing multifamily dwellings?
Which was what I was getting at, or maybe it's just a matter of terminology.
That's what I was trying to figure out. Do we have to define something better here? Because we've also got the windshare conversion which would not be allowed under our discussion of the district.
How about if we say something like, um, authorize and extended stays in hotels? And, and kind of differentiate it between an apartment because we don't want to encourage apartment blocks in an area that's essentially the gateway in there.
Despite the windmill already having fund for apartments, but definitely.
If it's any after that.
If it's there now.
If they solve this problem any better.
Oh, no, nobody has. I mean, my, my question is, do we want to redefine hotel? Do we want to redefine apartment? Or how do we? Because this is a valid concern that we've gone around and around and I'm not sure the right answer. Do you have any thoughts, Thorn, on it?
I I honestly don't know.
Because the definitions are all over the place.
There are, there's, there's maybe a half a dozen different qualifiers here in terms of housing of different kinds. I'm thoroughly confused because we tend to add ordinance on top of ordinance without looking at the effect of it overall because it's not been all drafted at one time. And, and it's just a confusing situation, especially with respect to these down at the heels hotels that are gonna wind up as an apartment eventually.
Are they gonna define themselves as apartments or are they gonna remain a hotel? Well, you have hotels that are extended stay.
Right.
And, and I think you can make an exception of extended stay hotels.
But do we want, do we want sands that are continuous and bringing then switch to apartments, which there's an expect, I think there's a little what I'm trying to say, what's the difference between an extended stay hotel and an apartment? I'm guessing it falls to who's responsible for maintenance, housekeeping, and that's what I'm thinking. My assumption is the hotel motel, the operator is a much larger role in keeping up the unit as opposed to an apartment.
I think the difference is if you say extended stay hotels versus apartments, it, it then excludes apartments from being built in that gateway corridor.
What, what we're trying to do, what, what we're trying to do is save the raw land from having residential.
Of course. So why can't we just say no new, uh, from Black and the Better. Of course. So why can't we just say no new, or back to the better term, no new multifamily residential, or no, no residential?
That's what it's set, when you zone, if you're in existing use, you can keep doing it.
I just wanna make sure that at the end of the day, rather than the, like, I'm an owner of a down-at-the-heels hotel, and rather than regulate my options away from me in what to do with this, like, take the SANS, for instance. Two years ago, the SANS was gross looking. And then they went to long-term, the owner of it recited the whole place, fixed up the whole place, it looks a lot better than it did. And now it's, I don't know what the capacity of it, or what the occupancy of it is now, but it's being used and it looks a lot better than it did. And I just don't wanna to regulate owners of those buildings away from being able to do something constructive for the community. But I, when I totally agree with you, I don't wanna see somebody come in on raw land and put up an apartment. I just wanna make sure that the people that have those existing buildings, because of the cost of tearing that down and put something, something else in there, it's going to preclude that from ever happening.
Wouldn't if we said precludes long-term rentals in hotels that are now on the premises already built? So we don't have people saying, well, I'm gonna go to hotel here, and then I'll change it down the road so I can have an apartment.
Well, I think we, we clearly excluded apartments for the multifamily, because that's excluded.
Yeah, but this could be a way for them to get around it.
They would have, they would have to build it as a hotel, which has, you know, fire code requirements, where it delivers a different set of construction regulations, and that off a long-term rental. The point, we're getting, the point we're getting at, Brian, is even if we did this today, and you had the SANS, you continue to operate as a long-term rental, you just couldn't sell it and then put an apartment there, is that right? We're looking at future, we're gonna be sold, we're not looking at present use.
But still, that creates a problem, though. If the owner of the sand sells it, and the next person is like, they can't rent it out long-term, is that what we're saying?
I think we're trying to come up with a way to allow long-term rentals in hotels.
So why can't we just say current permitted uses, you know, grocery stores, drugstores, hardware stores, yada, 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 existing residential and multifamily units, but no new structures?
Kind of backwards-based language, better liars, right? What? You just make owners and landlords better liars? We don't actually know what the problem is yet.
No.
Without a, without a problem, I can't figure out a solution.
Well, the problem is we don't wanna take away the ability to do all the long-term rentals.
Well, yeah, I know. Be, it's, it, I'm confused. Have they, have they already converted into apartments, or are these, from these hotels?
It's, it's in between. Yeah, yeah, they have. So the SANS, which is on Anchor, and like right behind Pirate's Cove, that's converted to long-term. This, the Windjammer right down this way, used to be timeshares, and last year it sold. And now they're long-term as well, and those, what's that?
They're apartments.
They're apartments. But they are, they're, they're apartments, and in fact, some of the ones, like the ones on the far side, are like two and three-bedroom houses with kitchens and everything, you know?
Well, they always all have kitchen counters.
Exactly.
Everything in the Windjammer, everything in the Windjammer met the definition along code for an apartment. Right?
And the same thing, the same thing goes with, the, the same thing goes with the SANS, those units, a lot, a lot of these units that were built in Ocean Shores were built with little kitchenettes and stuff, and it's built for somebody to come and hang out for a week. And so when it's down on its, on its heels and whatnot, and the fact that there's still more people that wanna move to Ocean Shores, and there are homes for, those places become lucrative for the owners of those, because they can rent them out a thousand bucks a month, you know?
Which also makes it affordable for people that are trying to work here.
Yeah, totally.
There's many people that are good. Yeah.
I think the biggest problem which it has is, is motels and hotels in most places like Sea-Tac have eighty percent occupancy. Ours is forty percent occupancy, motels and hotels. Until that changes, this discussion's just gonna be chasing its pay. The economics of running a motel will always trump the economics of running an apartment house if you've got occupancy, otherwise it won't. You can't fix it.
Maybe what we can say, though, is if, if we're gonna allow multifamily, which it sounds like that is by definition what we're doing, that we can restrict new building to a minimum square footage on a lot. And then we could take a look at the lots and say, none of them are gonna meet that criteria. Or, so say the lot has to be a minimum of, I don't know, twenty-four thousand square feet, half an acre. Are there many lots available for that?
Well, with the intent being that we want to, you want to prohibit new residential.
That's what I'm saying. Just for new, I'm just saying for new, you would require it to be.
If, why can't we just say that? Why can't we just come out and say that you prohibit new residential from going up in the Gateway Corridor?
I'd be okay with that. Because I think we need to allow those hotels to convert so they're profitable, so they can keep up the property.
New residential structures from being built in, in the Gateway Corridor.
Totally.
Or new residential only.
The, the, the way that, the, the new way to capture that would be on page nine, permitted use would be newly constructed, one-family, two-family, and multifamily.
There you go.
Period. Newly constructed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the bureaucrat's answer.
Yeah.
And it's kind of inherent in code anyways, because you're talking about future construction, but we can define it to prevent the backlash and somebody going to the sand and saying, here we go.
Well, if, if it's pre-existing, it doesn't have to, they don't have to change.
They don't have to.
There are other people that already have hotels that wanna convert to, to rentals in order to survive, but as long as they're already there, and we're not precluding that, we're doing that.
We really wouldn't need to have a condition, a conditional statement, because if it's pre-existing, it's already, it's already.
Well, that's why, I think you're right, Kevin. The easiest way to say this is, is.
That one's, one of the time, go ahead.
Well, I, I was just agreeing with you. I think your statement is the easiest way to say this. And it protects in a kind of roundabout way by differentiating between new structures and existing.
Newly constructed is result, is redundant and zoning, and that's what zoning is, is new construction. But what this does, like you said, maybe is protect some of these hotels that are doing long-term rentals and continuing with. All right.
And it's amazing how many rental units that may open up that we desperately need in this community.
Well, it, it's, I know of only three that are doing it big time. Inn and Suites, SANS, and that little one on the corner, Westerly. It's passed away or something else. Oh, yeah, I don't know the actions. So we'll do that. So the last thing I wanna look at this, and I'm gonna go on just two easy ones, gonna be hard, but I don't know. Well, Marshall is, the following shall not be permitted on the bottom of page eleven. Storage containers. I mean, we all agree, we don't want inoperable vehicles overnight. We don't want storage construction materials. I don't think we want overnight parking of the construction equipment.
How about tents?
They're already. Lot, lot, yeah. That's embarrassing.
What was it?
It's embarrassing.
What was it?
The tablet. Yeah.
It's that. Yeah, it's still connected to the emergency proclamation, and until that's lifted, it's still, just stays.
That's still going on?
Yeah.
And the ministry has not been lifted here. Mayor hasn't formally lifted it as a virtue.
Has not.
I know.
Yeah.
State has. I think completely, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Cities can be more restrictive until there's a demographic in Ocean Shores and this, uh, what do you call it, like influence or whatever is going around.
But I think what we went through is tents weren't permitted to begin with.
No.
So we don't need to say they're not permitted. They never were permitted.
Correct.
So we don't need to, like, say it again.
Okay.
And storage containers. Right now, there was a discussion that we have many people using properly. I'm guessing you'd say properly. I forget, I forgot to go around. I don't find it says one or two.
Yeah, they've got, well, actually, they've got a truck out there.
They got a reason.
Yeah.
Which isn't a store, so I mean, you can hear.
Actually, after I mentioned that, when we were talking about that before, I went and looked at it again, and it's a truck. The only one that I can think of downtown is Sunny Beach Cafe, which they've been trying to sell that for anyways. There's, there's a little one out back behind that one, too. But what we're, what you're getting at is, is construction stuff.
The ones right up the street here, there's like three of them now. So I, I think we can leave it for now, and then see if anybody causes a problem, so. But what I think I wanna do with this, um, again, no voting today, is sort of take this whole thing to the mayor and sit down with him to make sure that we're aligned with where he wants to go. And then we come back and take a vote on the revised language of the Gateway District.
Okay.
Because the city budget has a hundred fifty dollars, a hundred fifty thousand for Gateway Corridor study. But it's not the zoning, it's more the appearance and that sort of stuff, as I understand, but I wanna make sure we're not in conflict with what his vision for the Gateway study is. I don't know if that's clear, and then we get this all straight. All righty. That was not too painful. Lot clearing, and this is, um, um, that's where I was hoping Marshall would be here to, again, this will be very, very quick. Two things, and I, I think I'm legal, is, uh, the mayor and Marshall suggested that a couple of us meet with some developers who are dealing with this issue. There's a couple that Marshall recommends, who basically are, let's say, doing it right. Some of the developers out there who are after the law is cleared, going back and landscaping. Because we can start with a discussion of the problem. Had a long discussion with Marshall two days ago. They went to a lot, he said, oh my gosh, I'm gonna get to keep these four beautiful trees on the four corners. And he started tracing the roots, and they all went through the foundation. So following Ocean Shore, that even if you have trees not in the building footprint, Marshall knows more than I, the way the trees grow, the roots grow on the surface, and as soon as you disturb it for the foundation, you've got a danger. So you can't force an order to keep a tree that will be contagious to construction. So the solution that I think we all talked about was post-construction landscaping, a way that's enforceable, the understanding that with any of these small lots or little lot sites, and clear-cutting zones, often required, but an enforceable uh, post, post-construction landscaping. And the landscaping that's in here isn't that well done. So Marshall suggested is if we have a couple people that wanna sit down with the developer, he'll set it up. And then also, one or two of us could go on a, on a clearing permit walk with him to see what he does. And the whole reason of this is so we get an understanding to go back to the mayor and council so we can understand what goes into the process, what the difficulties that Marshall and the developers are facing. And then what's potential way forward on some enforceable post-clearing landscaping requirements? Because I've read the ones that are on page fifteen, they're really vague. Perhaps we can tighten that up. It's on the bottom of page fifteen, which talks about post-clearing of a vegetated restoration. So what I would ask is, just very simply, it's gonna be a very short discussion with our Marshall here, is you drop an email if you're interested in one of the two, either going on a walk with Marshall. But we have to restrict it to, most we can have is three. If we do this sort of thing. So I'll have to pick two for each activity, if I have a bunch of people that wanna do it. So send me an email if you're interested in either going with Marshall on a walk, or sometime in the next four weeks, or going, sitting down with a developer. The only thing I'll throw in this is having talked to some neighbors and talked to some other folks. We do have one particular builder who's offering sweat equity, and you landscape your own property. We can't stop that, but that's some of the problem. People are purchasing homes, and then the developer or the builder is saying, okay, you landscape it. But we know many people don't have the expertise, time.
Highline does.
Or money, I know. Adair's done it. Adair does it sometimes.
So how do we?
How do we start it?
Have, well, I think the issue is, is the, the rules are already on the books. There's just no teeth in it.
There's, yeah. The rule's a little bit weak, Marshall admits that. We can make a little more restrictive language. And then secondly, he thinks with his second, with another planner coming on board, we'll have a little more opportunity for enforcement. To go after a final occupancy, that he goes back and reminds the homeowner that when you got the permit, you were supposed to do X, Y, and Z landscaping. So that was kind of a starchy problem. But there's also a couple guys out here, um, if you get the name, two bills, a couple bills that are doing a pretty good job. The guy that did the house across from the community center, right across the street, doesn't always do a good job landscaping, there's a lot of that rules. So sort of talk about what they do to get an idea of how we could maybe bite something into it.
We could have a landscaping bond or something like that.
Yeah, that's the extreme, a ten thousand, most of the whole ten thousand for landscaping, is what they're saying. Most of the buildings that are doing it well, not Adair, not Highline, are holding ten thousand dollars. So when you, if you're, if it's not a spec home, they're gonna include ten thousand dollars in landscaping, the cost of your home. That's pretty much the standard according to Marshall and a couple of the other contractors. Does it cost that much? Well, you got a nice landscaper, you can do it, right? If that often includes driveways and sidewalks and that sort of stuff.
And without Marshall here, I mean, he would be the person that I would ask this question to, but is, as part of the, can we make a landscaping plan part of the permit process?
Yeah.
In that, like, like, I come in and say, hey, I need to clear this whole lot because it's got unusable trees on it. And then in order to be able to do that and get a permit to do that, I have to submit a post-landscaping plan or something.
That's kind of what it says now, but not tight. So getting Marshall and us to sit down and tighten up that language.
Sure.
Is the solution for that.
They can put that plan out there, but unless you have some teeth in it, doesn't mean they're gonna do it.
There, there's one thing in the language that's written now that, I don't know, maybe, maybe we should think about is that the preference is to let it revert back to its natural state. I mean, that's just, to me, sounds like, well, I can just not take care of my yard.
It is.
So I think that we might wanna really look at.
And that's what we, that's really what we need to do. And it's also, the natural state wasn't that pretty anyway, because the white myrtle is law. And we don't wanna replant white mytles law and scotch mytles. Yeah. So that's sort of it for this. The last item, many of you probably couldn't print it, and if you can't, I've got more of it. And this was more informational, um, from Marshall, as he brought it to my attention, that we'd have the, the state, yeah, you've got one, here's a big one. No, I, I don't think that one, I've seen it before. What we're having in you probably can't see it, the very last page, page sixteen, is a reply to one of the wetlands delineators, D.C. Marshall, that basically on the site plan that's in front of you.
It's Perry's house?
No.
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 My house, okay.
You can see Sandun Avenue, they wanna do a garage in a house. They were gonna be required to do that, fill a small part of the wetlands, and basically, the state had come back and said, sorry, no, you need to move your house closer to the street, which basically you need to get a variance from setback and have a small footprint for the house and garage. All over the interdual area, and with the SMP, uh, state and Corps of Engineers are experienced, they're much, much less willing to allow any sort of impact to an existing interdual wetlands. Having spent some time out there, if your lot wasn't filled thirty years ago, you have interdual wetlands on your lot.
How to pull back from the wetlands line, and should the, and the house be, or should the house be in the?
Uh, well, it's, it's, it's all in the buffer. Three hundred feet from the wetlands is the buffer. So you're, you're, you're in the buffer, and you're gonna have to mitigate that anyway. Three hundred feet from the wetlands is the buffer, so you're, you're, you're in the buffer and you're gonna have to mitigate that anyways. I've personally experienced this, and now this homeowner's got the worst I've ever seen, but to even build a house, they had to fill the wetlands.
He's over the line about twenty feet, it looks like, right?
Yeah. And so they typically need a five to fifteen foot from the wetland. To the house, so basically that's why that shaded area. Was shown as the fill area. And you can see the wetland line going around it, and the state now has gotten to the point of telling the city. They need to give a variance to setback. To not have wetland mitigation. This is not anything we can do anything about right now. It's more Marshall wanted people informed that. There's a growing issue that the state and the Corps, I've been there, I've got a lot that's got this issue, um. And I don't care, he's been down this road. If you pay for a wetland delineator, you're not having a good day in this, in this city.
At least it's six thousand dollars, a lot more painful.
It's got you. So the issue is, how? It's not something going away, I think it's more of an education issue. How do we let? Potential homeowners understand the impact if they're buying. Uh, lots that are in the buffer zone or actually in the interdual weather. Cause they're still all out there and they're still going for one fifty to two hundred. They're all have this issue. Cause if you didn't fill your lot thirty years ago, you've got wetlands on your lot. So is there something, I'm just asking for ideas, we can do for education. I mean, it's something that Marshall and I will probably present to the city council. That's one form of education, um, gonna come up in the renewal of the SMP. Which will be a public hearing, um.
Situation that's not gonna go away.
No, it's just getting worse. The wetlands are gonna grow and grow.
Yeah, well, and it's gonna get harder and harder to build it. Uh, you know, we've got wetlands all along the yard as well.
Yeah, but not yet. The interduals are the ones that are really getting tough.
It is really tough, I mean, to your point, we just went through it. Don't let me tell you, I have studied everything from the state. To the county, to the local, and it is very convoluted, it's very difficult to reach your way through it. How it intertwines in and out of the SMP, it's, it's, it's overwhelming, to be honest. And and I don't know what the answer is, but basically, anything that's waterfront is all buffer.
It's buffer, the buffer is something you can do with, the actual. The issue here is, you have a right to build a house. They can't, the state and courts says, can't say you can't build on the lot. What they're saying is you have not made enough attempts to mitigate the impact of the wetland. So move your house closer to the street, get rid of your garage, make your house smaller. Those are the things they can start asking you to do, and this is just state court works with the Wetlands Mitigation Bank, be able to uh. Doesn't matter. You're, you're, you're already gonna pay the Wetlands mitigation for the buffer.
Right, well, like in my case, I have no wetland, we have no wetland on the property, it's right at the boundary, right? So we're all buffer, so we did have to put something into the bank, and there's thirty eight feet of our property that we cannot use. Here, we can't build on it, we can't walk on it, we can't do anything, it has to be planted. So we, it has to have a fence on it, so do not enter.
But you've got.
Yeah.
Don't fail in the beach.
That's around to the beach, sure, use the neighbors.
I know, so you, but what what's going on now though is they're now starting to do this sort of stuff, we're saying. Yeah, you can have a house, you just can't have it there, that big, that location, and this is the first time they basically told. A, somebody wants to build a house to go to the city and ask for a waiver for setback. So now they're putting it into the cities, so your ordinance is on setback or less important than our laws on weather. So this, this house, so this, maybe it was the garage allowed, but it was definitely gonna violate setback, they're right on the edge of setback right now. So they're saying, relay it out, don't have a garage, get a setback waiver, but you haven't done enough. My situation is the double lot with a house on the lot already, so they said you can't do nothing. If you have a wetland on the other half of the lot, sorry, you don't wanna get your principal use.
Yeah.
You can't touch the wetland, cause the principal use is the house. When the house is there, if it's a double lot, you can't do anything over that, it's mine. Um, other than enjoy the wetlands. Please see what you get, after paying for a study. So the question is, how do we educate people? Because this is not going away.
Your slot is different, I have no idea. Each area is different, I have no idea.
But basically, anything that's waterfront is all uncovered.
If it's waterfront, it wasn't filled thirty years ago.
Talk about the ocean.
Yeah, ocean, and the interdual, if it's, it's. If it wasn't filled. Then it's almost guaranteed you're gonna have, the wetlands have migrated into that lot. So if you've got one of those filled lots, you're happy because no reason ever gonna build. They're gonna build on either side, but they're gonna build right up against the road, and your house was built on a twelve film nineteen seventy one.
So they say that we can't prevent you from building a lot, but making sure make it expensive, is that what they're saying?
Expensive, difficult, and not what you wanted to do.
Yes.
Basically what they're saying, and we're gonna stay in the cities now and coming by giving you a variance, what's that?
I think the variance is allowing with the code.
It is, but it's the state pushing, well, no, the state telling you to get that.
Yeah, so what you're saying is you wanna come up with some way to educate the public on this?
Well, who do we educate? Public? But I'm thinking.
Real estate.
I think Realtors need that.
Realtors, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a sort of a Realtors Association of Roots?
They all kind of worry about wetlands, but not to this extent, because it's almost like a priesthood, you know, you. You gotta know the magic words to understand this kind of stuff. Then you gotta purchase some buildings from church, and we, but we don't know the rules, and not only anybody knows rules.
Marshall does?
Maybe.
He's learning.
I do, having been through it and being a former plant engineers guy, I know it very well.
I don't know how you tell a layman to, except, don't buy it, right? That's, that's my advice, don't buy it.
Well, I don't know, that's the flip side of it now, we've been all over the most, what used to be the most valuable property on Ocean Shore, it's now. Which, it's all, the whole length of the beach is in. It's all uncovered by the interdual, but that's not a problem. The setback isn't the problem, or the official maps. There is no wetland that closed, we, we use about three of them, but aren't even close to there. But there's no, probably, they've done one.
Yeah, there's one that was done about twenty years ago.
Yeah, there's nothing enclosed, because the lot, the double lot, we have this lot I know, cause I bought by, so now whenever I drive down Sandun, the lot down Sandun, I like. Uh, no, no. That was great, they filled that lot for a camping lot thirty years ago, there's a billable lot.
Well, we were just really lucky, cause ours was built in two, in twenty eighteen, we didn't know it then.
Yeah. So this is more disinformational, and I'll, we'll talk to Marshall, we'll probably bring it up again, but. Um, is there, is there a group of Realtors that needs to, we have an association or anything?
Not really, no, they, uh. They, they closed up about ten years ago.
Well, and you can meet with each different agency around town, but then, like you said, a lot of the sales that happen are. From people that are from out of town now too.
Yeah, and most. Most big, most people aren't buying oceanfront lots anyway.
Well, like Marshall will tell you though, even if it's not oceanfront, if you see a willow on it, it's a wetland.
Yeah, there's a lot of that, green view and fair view and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, they're written there, but this is, this is an issue because it's kind of made oceanfront, ocean shore.
It will impact property values, there's no question.
Yeah.
Absolutely, no question, yeah.
Yeah, so what might it cost for this person to build a house? He could never build it i- into this wetland border area, is that right?
Correct.
No matter what you did.
Into, that's the actual wetland, it's not a border area.
Yeah, oh, okay. So it couldn't build in there, it could, could, I thought the Army Corps said you could fill that with the, um.
He can, he can build it after he, he can, he can fill the wetland after he's demonstrated every attempt to mitigate. So he has to show that he's moved his property as far forward as he can away from the wetland, and all that sort of stuff. So you have to demonstrate all attempts at mitigating impact.
What if this boundary went closer to the street, let's say within thirty feet of the street, then what?
Then, then it would be un, you, there's no way to mitigate it, he would have to fill. But he'd have a much larger expense into the bank. Cause every square foot you fill is amount of dollars you pay in the mitigation.
Seventy thousand, right?
Seventy thousand.
Is that for class one?
For class one, which is with all the interdual ones.
That's an acre typically about a sixth of a lot.
Yeah, so I know, it's, it's not a lot, but you can't even do that until the state and the Corps have said you've done enough attempts.
Correct. They'll determine how much.
Through, yeah, they, and they'll keep going back and forth, and you'll pay your architect. You admitted your wetlands delineator, and so these experts will debate about your property for years. And then you'll finally get to build something that wasn't what you really wanted built.
Sounds like trial or review.
It is.
It is, it, it is definitely case by case based.
It is, each one of them, but the end of the day, you can build.
Yeah.
Eventually, as long as you've demonstrated every attempt possible to mitigate direct impact. The buffer is not a problem. The other issue is all of these are gonna start requiring a public area. Every one of them.
The uh, what, what is it?
Right now, they're saying, do you think that's any impact, which is filling wetland?
Or building even clothes.
Or now, the buffer, they're still going back and forth on whether. Cause it is buffer, it is bigger day.
We've got a buffer boundary to do?
You can build every guy you have. Yeah, pay the bank at a lot lower rate, like one ten.
Yeah.
And you have to do certain protective things, so it's not the old days of where you go with the lot flat, building on a red rock and building out. So it's just education policy, I think, um, I'm gonna talk to Marshall of his ways to educate people. But I also think this is something that the leaders need to be educated on. I think it's something that the city council and the mayor, so I can definitely see Marshall and I doing it, arguing. In the very near future.
Would it be fair to say then that if you're in the oceanfront, unless it's been filled above road level, it probably something to be.
Very high likelihood that you have wetlands on your lot, not just buffer, the actual wetlands.
And, and even if it has been filled, you're still gonna be subject to it, cause you're in the buffer.
You're in the buffer, but again, easier.
Somewhere.
So.
Somebody's here.
You're gonna, you're gonna lose a lot of your backyard, but you still need to build your house.
Right.
And anybody watching to see if you step into the buffer, like satellites or anything.
Not yet, not yet.
So that was sort of the educational piece, and we'll talk a lot on time to do it. Alrighty, the secretaries for the next meeting, it's one of the new people. Let me see what it is, it is. And it's simple, you'll see them. We'll do that, after that, it'll be Kerry. Next meeting date is. One ten, right? So it's, it's the ten. Um.
So we're not on the twenty seven?
No, we're not doing one on the twenty seven, traditionally don't do one. Before I. Before I do the motion to adjourn, please join us, I have a bunch of Kerry's David treats, and we have cookies and pepperoni. Well, to celebrate Helen's wonderful. Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn? For a second, all in favor?